We'll next take up the order of motions, which has one item. That is, motion by Councilmember Jenkins to reconsider ordinance number 2024-009 related to minimum driver compensation for transportation network companies. Before I proceed to the vote, let me clarify our procedures. At our last meeting, Councilmember Jenkins gave notice of her intent to bring forward this motion, which is essentially a proposal that will bring back the TNC compensation ordinance so that the body might consider any refinements to the prior act. As everyone is aware, that ordinance was passed over the veto of the mayor and is set to become effective on May 1st. The motion before us does not change that fact. Absent any action on our part, this ordinance will become effective on May 1st. The clerk has prepared a summary of the procedures that are available to us. If this motion to reconsider is adopted, I ask that the clerk's summary be shared with all council members, and you should have received that by email last night. The first step for us to consider is the motion by Councilmember Jenkins. Adoption of this motion requires a majority vote of the members who are present and participating in this meeting. If that motion is adopted, then the original ordinance will be before us again, and we may consider further actions, if any, at that time. Those further actions cannot be considered unless the motion to reconsider is adopted first. So if there are any questions about this procedure, I'm happy to entertain those first; otherwise, we will proceed to the vote on the motion by Councilmember Jenkins to reconsider ordinance number 2024-009 related to TNC minimum compensation. Are there any questions about the procedure? Councilmember Jenkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to thank City Clerk Carl and yourself for that explanation of the procedure, so, thank you.
Great. Seeing no further discussion, the clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitah.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Vice President Chuck Tai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries. Next, we'll take up the order of motions, which has one item. I'm sorry, that's the wrong sheet. Colleagues, now we have ordinance number 2024-009 before us. Again, I'll give a brief explanation about our procedures at this point. After that, I'll ask if there's any further proposals on this ordinance. First, as I already indicated, this ordinance was enacted over the mayor's veto in March. It included a section which set the effective date for May 1st of this year, in addition to specific pay rates as compensation for TNC drivers. That ordinance was published on March 19th, which gave it legal effect. Therefore, any actions today are presented as ordinances to amend that prior ordinance. Although this feels different, that's exactly how our standard legislative process works. In other words, whenever we amend the code, we do so by enacting a new ordinance that identifies the changes in the code that we want to make. That's essentially what we're doing today. However, and just to be very clear for our constituents, absent any action on our part, the original ordinance will still become effective on May 1st. With the motion to reconsider, we have the opportunity to amend the original ordinance, just like we would normally do, and we amend ordinances by passing new ordinances. As provided in the city charter, passing an ordinance requires an absolute majority, which means we must have at least seven affirmative votes. Anything that we do today must be presented to the mayor as required by city charter. However, only our actions today would be presented to the mayor. That would not open the original underlying ordinance to the mayor. That action is done. I also had asked the clerk to provide an outline of these procedures last night, so I hope you got a chance to read those on what the potential opportunities are. At this point, I'll pause and ask if there's any questions about our procedure. Councilmember Palmasano.
No, that's not where I was in queue.
Any questions about our procedure? I think we are ready to proceed. With that, I will ask if there are any amendments. Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, President Payne. Yes, I would like to introduce a motion to amend. The amendment is before you. It's an amendment to the effective date of the ordinance, moving that from May 1st to July 1st. This amendment was crafted with Council President Payne and Councilmember Chowdhury, and in conversation with many council members and business stakeholders and state legislators over the last couple of weeks. So now that we have passed the motion to reconsider the ordinance, this amendment is intended to create a more reasonable timeline for continuing our legislative process while tracking discussions and ongoing collaboration with state officials in their work to craft a statewide policy on this issue. I will also note that we are working proactively at this time to prevent potential disruption in rideshare service with the transition to new rideshare service companies and supporting our communities using public transportation options and continuing to -- that our diverse communities continue to have mobility. So with that, I will stand for questions and discussion on this amendment.
Councilmember Cashman has moved her amendment. I will call on Councilmember Jenkins. Oh, and is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Jenkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank the authors of this resolution. It gives us an opportunity to really continue our deliberative process, as well as for various rideshare companies to be able to adjust to the new ordinance as it has been passed by this body. So, thank you all.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was really proud to be an author of this amendment. I believe that the extension of our implementation date is a really good thing for us here to accomplish the things that we need to accomplish for the ordinance that is really meant to support a fair minimum wage for drivers in the city of Minneapolis and give riders an opportunity to be participating in a rideshare economy that is rooted in justice for workers and moving forward in that direction. I'll echo the things that Councilmember Cashman mentioned. This allows us as a council to go through our legislative process. There's pieces of discussion that are still happening. For many council members like myself, I am interested in getting information from our policy and research team that has been working on an analysis that considers the state report in my capacity as IGR Chair. I've been talking consistently with state legislative leaders on their respective legislative process, and they have yet to decide key components of their bill and are really looking to us to work on our side and complete our policy as they're completing their bill. They're asking that there is time for us to collaborate together, move through our respective processes, and it matters to me and many of the leaders here on our city council that we are able to go through a collaborative process and really come together on a policy here in the city of Minneapolis that supports our community. And I just want to take some time to thank our legislative leaders and our Minneapolis delegation in joining us to come to the table over the last few weeks. I'll also note, as we have now four applications of new rideshare companies, they're in the process of completing those applications and getting licensed, and that takes time. Also, there's been great conversations that have been happening at the Metropolitan Airports Commission, and what I've learned through that is that that also takes time to get licensed. And I've had some good conversations in our twin city next door in St. Paul, where they're receiving applications as well. Their processes are a little bit different, and so I feel really good about this extension. I think this is positive, and it is just getting us to a good place of really coming to the table and having discussions with all of the stakeholders that I've named, but also the community that's currently in the room today and folks that are tuning in and have been reaching out to the council. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Councilmember Chowdhury. Councilmember Wonsley.
Thank you, Council President Payne. Also, I want to echo gratitude to my colleagues for bringing this forward. After speaking to drivers who have been working with several of the new rideshare companies who plan to enter the market in the coming weeks, I feel comfortable supporting this extension. A two-month extension, as some of my colleagues have already shared, will give new rideshare companies more time to get their operations in order and to also provide additional time for various stakeholders to inform the public about the new rideshare options that are coming to Minneapolis. Additionally, this extension gives the state the chance to finish out their legislative session and pass a strong statewide policy that guarantees minimum wage equivalence to the entire 10,000 Minnesota drivers that provide rideshare services every single day. That said, I am confident that this small delay in implementation will lead to better outcomes for drivers and riders statewide and also lay a stronger foundation for Minnesota rideshare industry that is more equitable instead of extremely exploitive, which it is now. So thank you again to our colleagues for bringing this.
Councilmember Vitah.
Thank you. I'm going to be supporting this today also, but I'm not going to be supporting this because I think it's a solution. I'm going to be supporting it because my constituents have been living in fear and anxiety over the uncertainty of whether they'll be able to have a job or have housing, get to their jobs, or get their children to school. You know, in this work, we all need to be willing to admit when we get things wrong, and I just think this is a bad policy, and we need to go back and fix it. I really hope that over the next couple of months, there's an opportunity for us to fix it. I hope my colleagues will have the courage to fix it by July 1st. I spoke with a couple of the new proposed rideshare companies, and one in particular told me that they don't even know if they're going to be able to meet the demand of how much Minneapolis is requiring for payment in our ordinance. So it's going to be interesting to see how this shakes out with new companies. And then, you know, the second part about a new company is, it takes a lot of work and a lot of time to start a new business, and this feels extremely rushed. A month ago, we voted on the extension for the original date for this policy to be enacted, and I recall colleagues saying, "Oh yeah, we'll have enough time by April 1st. We just need to extend it out for another month." Now we're going for two more months. And I mean, I'm hoping we're going to fix it, but it's a lot of work to start a new business. It's a lot of stress to put on new business owners to start this, to get it going, you know, to work out the kinks. Not all the kinks. We know things happen. No matter how old your company is, you're still working out the kinks, but to work out the kinks enough, some of the concerns I've heard about are like the background checks and the vehicles, if they're, you know, going to be checked out. And so I'm really hoping that this two -- I'm supporting this because I'm hoping that this two months is going to give us time, but I am doubtful that that's going to happen. And, you know, I'm going to end with just saying, we, as a council, we just can't continue to make these kinds of decisions. If you make decisions without facts, we had a day to wait for the facts. If you make these kinds of decisions without facts, we're no better than Donald Trump. Thank you.
Councilmember Rainville.
Whoa. Donald Trump. Woo. So first of all, I want to thank the hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people who have emailed and text and called the Ward 3 office to explain the trauma that this hastily passed ordinance has caused to their lives and the uncertainty that that has caused. And I will be voting for this third deadline because we have to get this right, and this hopefully gives us the time to include the state and Uber and Lyft and any of the new companies, I see some here today, in this discussion, because up until now, we have not included all those parties. To say it a different way than Councilmember Vitah did, we have to be inclusive and transparent of everybody that this ordinance will affect. So I will be voting for this, but we actually shouldn't put any deadline on. We should not do anything until we get this right. Thank you.
I see Councilmember Chavez in queue, but I believe that is for Councilmember Osman.
Thank you so much, President Payne. I wanted to kind of remind us that if we believe minimum wage, that's exactly what we did a couple of months ago. But I want to talk to the drivers. I know this has confused you all, that you have showed up the last two years, and you are on the audience today. This extension we're doing is reasonable, that we are trying to work with the state, trying to get to a solution. We are committed to you. We will continue to commit it to you to get a fair wage like everyone else, like everyone else sitting here, sitting in Minneapolis, gets a fair wage. They get that protection, and you deserve that protection. So we're committed, and I want to thank the council members who have been having conversations, Councilmember Chowdhury and Cashman, who have shown leadership and worked with the state and making sure that we're not the scapegoat. If there's any, you know, anything happens on the state side, that we're willing to work with you. We're willing, we're committed, passing minimum wage fair for the drivers. This extension might not influence the threat of Uber and Lyft companies saying that they're leaving. Let's be realistic, we are hostage to them. If we had a competition, if we had other companies, we would not be in this place today. So this extension is a good faith on our side for the state, for the new apps, for new companies coming in, but the threats of Uber and Lyft holding us hostage is still out there. So just wanted to remind you all that what we did, it's protecting the people that need the most. Drivers have been here, have been advocating, have been showing up, and they deserve protection like everyone else. Thank you so much, Council President.
Thank you, Councilmember Osman. Vice President Chuck Tai.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I really appreciate some of Councilmember Osman's comments earlier today just around, you know, this is about helping people who need it the most and drivers and workers, really, who are exploited by these two corporations that hold so much power in the rideshare economy. And, you know, our responsibility as a government agency and having their back is an important one, and I think it's one we all take very seriously, and I'm, you know, I'm really glad that we are willing to admit when it's time for us to slow down and time for us to get to the very best outcome in the conditions that we are in at a given time. So right now, we are actually making a lot of progress in our work with the state. We are, we continue to talk to them. Somebody from this council talks to them every day, and we are getting closer and closer to having one shared understanding and one shared wage that is, that works both between the state and the city, right? And finding policy solutions that allow Minneapolis to create a minimum wage that works for our economy while also being complementary to a statewide wage. And that alone, to me, is enough of a reason for us to slow down, that we are getting closer to a place of agreement with our state. And as they work towards the end of their legislative session this year, they continue to want to engage with us and want us to be good faith partners, and this is us, you know, meeting them halfway and trying to figure out a way for all of us to work together. So I feel really optimistic that in the next, in the next couple of months, this extension both allows us to get to a statewide policy that's complementary to a Minneapolis policy and it allows for us time for rider adoption of whatever new rideshare companies are coming into our market. I think there's several that are, that drivers have a pretty close relationship with and are starting to work with, and we want that same type of time for riders to get to have that type of relationship with whoever is new and coming into our market. And I think for those two reasons, I'm excited to support this and am really appreciative to Council President Payne, Councilmember Cashman, and Councilmember Chowdhury for your work on this.
Thank you, Vice President Chuck Tai. Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you, Council President Payne. I also want to thank the authors for bringing this forward. I'll be supporting it, but I want to be very clear. We will never allow Uber and Lyft to continue to exploit our immigrant, our Black, and people of color drivers any longer. The hostage situation that we have by them continuing to threaten them leaving our city and continue exploiting our workers with 10 per trumps is unacceptable. So I'll be supporting this. I think it's a good faith effort. I appreciate the authors for bringing this forward. I also want to dispute the facts about us being called Donald Trump. If that was the case, I would have voted no, because I wouldn't believe in workers' rights, but I voted yes, because I believe in workers' rights. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Chavez. I put myself in queue just to thank my co-authors, Councilmembers Cashman and Councilmembers Chowdhury. This has been a very complex topic to follow. Part of the complexity is just the nature of the market. It's very dynamic, and there's a lot of stakeholders that are impacted. A lot of those stakeholders are in this room right now, but especially the stakeholders at the state Capitol, the stakeholders downtown. It's through this deep collaboration across stakeholders that has brought us to this point, and I believe we're going to get to a better outcome as a result. So I really do appreciate your leadership. Seeing no other discussion, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitah.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Vice President Chuck Tai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and that amendment is adopted. Are there any further amendments? I see Councilmember Palmasano in queue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to rescind the Transportation Rideshare Worker Protections Ordinance, and if I can get a second, I then have some remarks on that. First, colleagues, I'd like to thank Councilmember Jenkins for finding a way for us to stop this train. She is the reason why we were able to take a pause today, and all of your approval on that is actually really heartening. This ordinance was awfully misguided. A sign of good faith here is to start over. Interestingly, there's already a lot of ideas as to how, and I welcome them to start with a clean sheet of paper. This ordinance started with the good intent to ensure every rideshare driver earned a city-mandated minimum wage, but it is now so tainted with negative public opinion and outcry that I find it unsalvageable. It's caused Uber and Lyft to make plans to stop providing service to Minneapolis. I'm sure I'm receiving the same communications your offices are, people coming up to me in public, like you all are, from people who are upset, angry, frustrated, and downright despondent over this ordinance. You may actually be receiving more communications than me officially, because I'm one of only three members of this body, to see what a monumentally bad idea this was and vote against it whenever I had a chance. The consequences of this ordinance were clear to me before the first vote. I don't say unintended consequences, I say consequences. It was easy to see what they would be. It was easy to see that large numbers and groups of people would be negatively impacted if even a small amount of forethought was put into this. Rideshare drivers are not a monolith. They're a diverse group of people who pursue this work for a wide variety of reasons. Assuming that they all wanted and would benefit by this was negligent. I've heard from many, many drivers telling their truths about what this will do to them. It means more competition for less rides if the price of the rides goes up. It means loss of their source of income and ability to provide for their families. TNC drivers who had financed their cars have had them recalled. For a couple of drivers in my own ward, that means everything to their ability to provide for their family. It means the loss of college tuition through the Uber Pro College program. One of my constituents was three courses away from creating, from being able to finally complete his college degree. These aren't hypotheticals, they're already happening. How did this council push through an ordinance they thought was best without taking into account data and the will of the people? Did they not care? That's not true. We all care. But even as I speak with you this week, it feels like sadly, other kinds of victories or self-promotion are more important, and frankly, that makes me sad. There are many governmental and nonprofit agencies that supply medical or CADDY Community Access for Disability Inclusion waivers to their clients. These are contracts held with Uber and Lyft. What happens to these folks when Uber and Lyft leave the market? Upcoming TNC companies will not be ready to take on that work. They will need time, they'll need to vet any new possible partners, they'll need to ensure their needs are being met, and then negotiate a contract. These clients are going to be left without any supported transportation. To suggest that Uber and Lyft can choose to leave this market and new companies will fill this void is a fantasy. The void of 400,000 rides per week in the metro area is not going to be accounted for in even two more months. New vendors don't have the infrastructure and technology to fill this. This will take an extraordinary amount of time and money to create new service providers. Those with access to capital are privileged. This immediately puts those without means at a disadvantage, and it's going to perpetuate their historic marginalization. So let's go back to the drawing board and craft an ordinance that meets the needs of drivers, of riders, and the community at large, or let the state legislature direct a statewide plan. Minneapolis going alone and damaging itself, the metro area, and the rest of the state has proven to be folly. I am willing to support an entirely new, common sense ordinance that fulfills the goals of every driver receiving a minimum wage while not doing harm to the rest of the community. I know this is possible, if my colleagues are willing. Some of you have important ideas that you're looking to incorporate in a different ordinance. I doubt there is the will here today, but I am here to say, let's start over.
Councilmember Wonsley.
So I want to provide some clarity for the public about this process, as there has been lots of erasure of the intentionality that went into this policy process. This policy was not done in a haste. There was two years of work that went into the development of this policy, starting last year, where hundreds of drivers, after having come to City Hall several times, where several council members were here, preceding myself, heard from drivers saying that they were being exploited by these two corporate giants and they needed government intervention, that they were not being paid the wages that was needed or was in alignment with 70,000 other workers who receive a minimum wage here in Minneapolis. From that, council took action to initiate a legislative process, specifically me, council members Osman, as well as council member Chavez. We initiated the legislative process. And what did we do first? We said, this policy has to be backed by data. So we initiated a legislative directive that asked the mayor's staff to do analysis that would get us a minimum wage equivalent for Minneapolis for rideshare drivers. That took several months, and at the, while they were doing that process, we offered to meet with every single council member, and we asked for your feedback, we asked for your input, we asked you for any ideas that you had to help shape this policy. None of you said anything. And then we transitioned into having briefings about the findings from the executive staff's report that got us a $1 report that got us a $1.40 per mile and a $0.51 per minute. We also had community public sessions where we asked residents, what's your thoughts on this? We had this all throughout the first, second, and third quarter of last year. So we went into August of last year with the proposal of $1.40 per mile and $0.51 per minute, having done extensive engagement, having done analysis that was not just shaped by the mayor's staff, but was done in consultation with national experts, those who also authored the state's DLI report. And then you all voted it down, at least a majority of you voted it down, in August, and Mayor Frye vetoed it. And at that point, you all said, let's do this, let's start from scratch, let's think through how we can get drivers a minimum wage. And many of you said, actually, that is where there is alignment. We do agree that drivers should earn a minimum wage. And in response to a majority of councilmembers on this body saying, we want drivers to earn a minimum wage, the co-authors decided to initiate the legislative process all over again and prioritize the minimum wage, because we identified that as having shared agreement amongst this body. And what then we do? We started all over again. We invited every single councilmember to do 101 briefings with the co-authors to bring ideas and shape this policy. We met with the mayor's office, we were in conversations with our state leaders, and we even received actually from those conversations several compensation recommendations. And because, again, we prioritize research, we asked our own staff for the second time to do a research analysis comparing our proposal to the several other compensation rates proposed by councilmembers and the mayor's office. That came forward early this year, and it found that the $1.40, as well as the $0.51 per minute, was the closest to guaranteeing drivers here in Minneapolis a minimum wage No one has been blindsided by this process for two years. We have done everything to engage critical stakeholders and still are doing that. We have based our policy, even when the state did not do their research. We did our homework, because we knew we wanted to ground a wage that was based and backed up by facts. And we did our homework, not once, not twice, but three times right now. So I want to highlight, there was so much intentionality poured into this policy. And also, I don't agree that we're in this position where vulnerable residents and riders, like our disabled communities, are being pitted against drivers who are also predominantly black, immigrant, and brown, and who are poor and disproportionately reliant on public assistance themselves. We know when it comes to serving our vulnerable communities, the workforce for disabled folks, for child, children are often paid the lowest of wages. So this should not be a time where we allow riders who are vulnerable, as drivers who are vulnerable, to be pitted against each other. You, as riders, deserve affordable services, and Uber and Lyft can provide that to you they're choosing not to. And they also are able to provide a $15 minimum wage to our drivers as well. It's a choice that they don't want to do that. So I also want to acknowledge, we should not be allowing vulnerable communities to be divided, because that division is being leveraged by two multibillion-dollar corporations who absolutely have no care about disabilities or disabled residents, because they fought ADA compliance policies, and they also don't care about the drivers that they exploit every single day. So I want to level-set how we got here today. The research, the work that went into this process, we did not go into this foolishly. We went into this thoughtfully, and it's exactly why today I will continue to support what we passed last month by a supermajority.
Rideshare with disabilities will be left behind though. We will be impacted. So consider that.
I put myself in queue, because Councilmember Palmasano brought up the issue of some of the driver hardships that she's heard from her community, and I think it's really important to highlight that those hardships are happening right now, today, under the current structure of the marketplace. And those hardships are going to continue if we don't take action now. And that's why we've already taken action, and this is about refining this policy, this is not about starting from scratch. We already know the hardships that drivers are experiencing under the current reality that exists today. So I won't be supporting a rescinding of this. We've already put into process a way to refine this, to make it be a really comprehensive solution that works both for the city of Minneapolis and for our partners at the state. We don't need to start from scratch. As Councilmember Wonsley has highlighted, we've done a lot of really deep work here, and it's ready to really refine that work going forward. I'll call on Councilmember Jenkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to clarify the record that I met with the authors of this every single time it was requested, and I added my thoughts around disability riders, which did make it into the ordinance. So to say that no one responded and no one added anything is just factually untrue. I do think we have some new data that can help us determine what is the actual fair amount that we can be assured that drivers are making a minimum wage, as well as maintain the rideshare services that many, many people in our community depend on for their livelihoods, for their access to medical, educational, employment resources that are so desperately needed. So to reconsider this idea, which I brought forth so that we can make some pertinent changes to this policy, is very important to me. And, you know, the motion to rescind offers an opportunity to restart, but has been stated, there's been much work that has been going on in this process. So I think we need to refine, not necessarily rescind. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jenkins. Councilmember Chowdhury.
Yeah, I just wanted to state for the record, thank you, President Payne, that I will not be supporting this motion to rescind. I think Councilmember Jenkins did a good job just sharing that this is a moment for us to refine and have discussions. I think to rescind and delete the ordinance in its entirety would be a great disservice to the workers and our state leaders that are willing to come to the table with us. I think it's not in alignment with the discussions that we're having with them and the potential discussions that we want to have with the governor's office. I also just want to name, it has never in history been easy to challenge exploitative systems and ask for a change. This is, we are not in a vacuum in the city of Minneapolis. We are participating in addressing an exploitative system across the country that has led to multiple municipalities and whole states asking Uber and Lyft to no longer exploit their workers. And I just want to take this second to say that we need to shift our attention to those companies that have the ability to change this and not impose higher costs on the ridership and not pit working people against each other just to make a higher profit or to appease their investors. And they need to be ready to come to the table to make those commitments. So I will not be rescinding today.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't mean to belabor this anymore. Your timelines are suitable for politics and for sure for politicians, but not for the people of Minneapolis. Let's start over. We can have the rest of the stakeholders, of which there are many, at the table. You know, one important thing from this whole process was to see who is taking rideshare and where they are going. People, I've learned, are taking rideshare to get to their day-to-day needs. In my own ward, some of the most oft-frequented starting or stopping points is our local high school and our skilled nursing facility. Other places that people go most often, or more often than not, are Target, the grocery store, other healthcare providers. This is how some people use it to get to their day-to-day needs. Sometimes you have to start with a clean canvas. You can start from scratch and get to something better on the same timeline we are operating on now. We got here today, was said before, we got here today by relying on information from another city. We did not want to wait for local data. This entire ordinance was based on bad data, and I think we need a fresh start and a fresh look, based on the data that's now been provided. It also allows us to consider the immense amount of feedback we've received. Thank you.
Not seeing anyone else in queue for discussion, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Aye.
The microphones are having problems. You may have to activate your own switch. I'm sorry for that. Councilmember Chavez.
No.
Councilmember Vitak.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
No.
Councilmember Kosky.
Nay.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Nay.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Nay.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Nay.
Councilmember Cashman.
Nay.
Councilmember Osman.
Nay.
Vice President Chugtai.
No.
President Payne.
No.
There are three ayes and 10 nays.
That amendment fails. Are there any further amendments? Councilmember Kosky.
Thank you, President Payne. Colleagues, Councilmember Jenkins and I are bringing forward an amendment that adjusts the per-mile rate and per-minute rates and maintains the regular external evaluations. The amendment's per-mile rate, $1.21, is the comprehensive rate recommended in the state's Department of Labor/Industry report. It is based on DLI's dataset of more than 18 million Minnesota trips and driver earnings. This rate includes the Minneapolis minimum wage plus benefits. In my conversations with state leaders, the debate there is between 89 cents and $1.21. So this is setting us at the top of their range, again, in the top of their range, which is rooted in their robust data. The amendment's per-minute rate is 51 cents and is the rate recommended in the city's Policy and Research Division's report. It is based on PAR's Minneapolis-specific factors, like car rentals, gas, insurance, not considered in the state's DLI report. Leadership in decision-making entails gathering information and making informed choices while also embracing uncertainty and adapting to new information. My goals have and continue to be to ensure fair wages for drivers, stability for drivers and riders, and a healthy competitive market. This amendment achieves all these goals. Transportation network companies are paying drivers a sub-minimal wage. The city council took action to fix that. The state and the city have worked diligently to research and analyze available data, and the prevailing result of that work supports an adjustment to the rideshare ordinance. We must now take action to adjust accordingly. We learned yesterday that while our Policy and Research Division may provide additional information in the form of an extremely broad range of outcomes, we will not receive a single data point or range to be universally adopted as the correct compensation rates. The current rates are braced on our Policy and Research Division analysis, which was done with the limited data they were able to obtain, which did not include data from Uber and Lyft. The state's DLI analysis was done with significantly more data and included data, like I said, from 18 million Uber and Lyft trips to the state, but predominantly in the city. It's our responsibility to take the information before us and make an objective database decision. Moving forward, we will review and amend the rates using the regular external evaluations ingrained in the existing ordinance. The regular external evaluations will take place six months annually on the effective date. I'm grateful that the effective date has already been moved back to July 1st. The extension will give the market time to adapt and will give us an opportunity to build a fair and flexible market, or at least a start of building that market, with healthy competition and good faith partners. I've been leading ongoing conversations with downtown partners on strategies to enhance market accessibility, boost entry and use for new companies, and support drivers in this transitional period. These strategies include potential grant programs, marketing and advertising support for new companies, and workshops for drivers. Today, I urge my fellow colleagues to consider this amendment that is both centered in our intentions and based on our current available data, the only substantial data we at the city and the state has right now. Thank you for your consideration.
Councilmember Kosky has moved that amendment. Is there a second?
Second.
I will call on Councilmember Jenkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I just want to urge my colleagues to support this amendment that incorporates the research that has been done on our local community by the state of Minnesota. They offered a range, and this amendment is at the top of that range. So it includes the protections around workers, sick and safe time, vacation time, health care, and other kinds of expenses that workers may incur. And again, I would just encourage my colleagues to support this amendment that is based on the data in our local community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jenkins. Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, President Payne. I am grateful that we have now extended the implementation date of our ordinance, that we can continue having conversations about rate. And just regarding data, I want to thank Councilmember Chowdhury for setting up briefings with the state's DLI team for each councilmember to actually learn about the process of the methodology behind their data and what it reveals to us. And one thing I want to just clarify for the public and for media is that we have not been able to have any data without doing a legislative process. Uber and Lyft have been very reluctant to actually provide data to the city or to the state, and it's only because of the legislative actions that we've been taking over the last couple of years that they have shown us any data to continue to inform our policies. And I think right now, we only have data on drivers from 2022. That's what the study informed. And we would love to have data on riders. Councilmember Palmasano actually spoke to where folks are using the rideshare services to get to, and I also saw some data that Lyft put out on social media about downtown venues in my ward being some of the top destinations. But this is really important information that we should have. So as we continue to refine our policy, let's find ways to get that data from rideshare companies and from the Department of Labor and from our city staff here at the Community Planning and Economic Development Department, to continue to have a data-informed policy, because we really do need that.
Thank you, Council President Payne. So I will not be supporting this motion. I have been consistent that if new and additional information came forward that would challenge the findings of the current rates that were passed by council, I would happily bring the amendment myself to reflect those recommended changes, because I believe, as I said earlier, all of our policies should be rooted in factual data, not political expediency. I also have no interest in changing these rates based on corporate pressure. The same information that was provided to council on March 14th, when we voted to override the mayor's veto, is the same information that we have today. That said, I want to make it clear for the public that there has been no new information provided to councilmembers to support the rate amendment before us. The only thing that may have changed is that, yes, councilmembers are feeling pressure to go back on their votes to support some minimum wages. I also want to note, and this is really important too, that none of our near dozen new- new and expanding rideshare companies coming to Minneapolis have raised any concerns about the rates that we pass. In fact, they are coming to Minneapolis in response to council passing the original ordinance that put the rates at $1.40 per mile and then 51 cents per minute. The $1.21 rate compensation that we're being asked to consider today is reflective of the DLI's analysis of the seven-county metro area, which includes places like Chaska and Northfield. And I don't think I need to explain why the cost of doing business in Minneapolis is different than it is in places like Dakota County or Carver County. There has been no new information that demonstrates that our current rates are incorrect. So I will not be supporting this amendment and continue to stand with what we passed originally.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Thank you, President Payne. So I will just start off by saying I'm unable to support these compensation rates at this time in this meeting today. I also just want to take a second to kind of clarify for the public record. I think there was something said about the debate at the legislature is just in the range of 89 cents to 1.21. While that might be the range that is provided in the DLI study, and many people are advocating within that range, there are authors at the state legislature on this bill that are calling for a rate that is higher than 1.21. So I just wanted to clarify that the debate is also happening outside of the range, and they're figuring out their process over there. So it's not just set in 89 cents to 1.21. We have a process in place where we will be hearing from our Policy and Research Team. And I disagree that it's not worth hearing from them as they're working on analysis to be providing consideration of the state study. And one of the asks from many people, including myself, was let's consider the state study. And we have been able to take a deeper look through this way. And PAR will be completing their analysis next week, and I hope this body can work together to have a presentation of it where we can all be a part of it. And while a universally adopted correct per-mile compensation rate data point or range may not be provided, we will be provided with additional data points to facilitate this discussion on this subject. And I made a public commitment that if there was additional data and information that I could consider, I would thoughtfully be willing to make changes as long as it was about achieving our goal of a fair minimum wage for the city of Minneapolis for TNC drivers. Not because of corporate pressure, not because of politics, but because we have new information available to us, and I'm open and ready to consider it. And unfortunately, the timeline of passing a compensation rate doesn't line up, the timeline today to pass this compensation rate doesn't line up with us getting the information and the process of actually getting to use that as an informed way to have a discussion. And so I'm really glad that we have more time for our legislative process to do that.
Councilmember Vitale.
Thank you, Chair Payne. I just wanted to just kind of clear something up because there was a comment made by Councilmember Cashman about Uber and Lyft not providing information to the city of Minneapolis. And just first, you know, we had a presentation a few months back from city staff because there was a legislative directive, and our staff used that information from other cities to present to the council to make that decision. They never requested information from us. I don't think, as of now, city staff has ever requested information from Uber and Lyft or has even met with Uber and Lyft. I know there was an email exchange from out of my office a month or so ago about this, like, have you met with Uber and Lyft? Have they said no to giving you information? And staff here at the city of Minneapolis said, no, we haven't met with them, and no, we have not requested the information. We're going to wait for the state request. So I caution my colleagues about, you know, speaking to, if staff hasn't received something, if they didn't ask for it, why would they receive it?
Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, President Payne. I forgot to mention in my earlier comments that I will be supporting this compensation change today based on the data that we have in front of us, the DLI study, which we can't confirm at this time that we will have any new data coming forward, which is why I mentioned how important it is for us to create mechanisms to ensure data transparency from the companies who are licensed and operating in our city. But I'm willing to support the compensation rates that Councilmember Kosky and Councilmember Jenkins brought forward today based on the DLI study.
Councilmember Osman.
Thank you, Council President. I will not be supporting this. But I do want to mention to you and share a little bit of story of how Uber and Lyft are not just exploiting drivers, but also riders too. Yesterday was a holiday for Islamic Eid holiday. Most of the Muslim practicing drivers, majority of them that drive in Twin Cities area, have logged out yesterday around 8:00, 7:00 o'clock, 8:00 in the morning to go pray and spend time with their family. Well, that means there was less drivers on the road. I got some screenshots that Uber and Lyft were hiking the price for seven minutes' trip. They were charging customers, disabled or non-disabled or anybody who requested, $76 or $80 for seven minutes' trip. So they're not just exploiting drivers and paying less, but they're also exploiting riders. Less than a mile, less than a mile yesterday's trip, and I have those screenshots right here, was $70. What does that say about them? Just want to share that with you. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Rainville.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Please, we need to conduct our business. Please hold your comments. Councilmember Rainville.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's very clear we have a divided council on this, and we need more discussion. But I would just ask, as we go forward, to Councilmember Vitale's point, let's include Uber and Lyft, let's include the new rideshare drivers. And however our staff was very smart and brilliant, can figure out, let's get input from the users. That's the emails that we've all been getting is the panic and the trauma that is being caused by the users. So let's include everybody as we move forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I can't sit here and listen to this without also pointing out that this rate isn't within the range of the state study. One of the numbers is, the other is not. And I also need to point out again how much the state study is already weighted to drivers. I learned that more and more in our briefing with the commissioner herself. And the way these calculations work, if we had city-level data, which it's been clear we will not be getting from the state and has been clear for many weeks, as confirmed by the commissioner, the rates here in the city would go down. They wouldn't go up, they would go down. So I just needed to point out that at the lower end of the state study, that includes minimum wage for all parts of a trip, both a driver waiting to see riders that might be in queue and accept a ride, both the driver driving to pick up the passenger, and then when the time that the rider is in the back of their car. That 89 cents per mile rate includes vehicle acquisition, not for people who already have a car and they're going to use it for Uber or Lyft. It includes vehicle acquisition, it includes the gas, the insurance, a mobile phone, maintenance, cleaning costs, all cleaning costs, and license and registration. At the top of this range, the 1.21 rate, which that rate is being proposed here in this motion, it just doesn't have the other elements, it includes things that most part-time workers in our city do not have access to. It includes sick time, paid leave, health insurance, retirement savings, and unemployment insurance. All of these things are important, all of these things should be available to everybody. But for part-time workers, they generally don't have this, and independent contractors, this is usually something they need to calculate differently. Every driver for TNC can deduct 67 cents per mile, which ends up being an average, I learned from the commissioner, of $23,400 a year on their income. That's not a tax credit, that's an income credit, and that is very significant for drivers to continue to be eligible for other kinds of entitlements that the state provides, like Minture and other kinds of programs. So I just needed to call out the facts here on where the rates are in this particular motion because I also won't be able to support it this morning. Thank you.
I put myself into queue because I just wanted to touch on a couple of the complexities of this conversation. The top-level complexity is that there's never going to be one number that captures the totality of the dynamics of this marketplace. This marketplace is inherently dynamic. So that means on any given ride or for any given driver, their expenses are going to be different than another driver. But then also on any given shift, it's going to be different. The dynamic that Councilmember Palmasano is referencing is around the difference between driving in the inner core of the city versus in the suburbs. That higher density is going to lead to you having a more efficient shift going from one rider to the next. So the P3 or the time when you have an active rider will be a higher share of your time on shift. But if you're doing more trips to the airport, you're going to be sitting and waiting longer for those trips. And so even on a per-trip basis, the rate is going to be different. There's not a technologically feasible way to calculate real-time expense rates on a per-trip basis. That's the fundamental problem that we're trying to address here. And so we're trying to identify what is a reasonable number that will allow for the majority of these scenarios to achieve a minimum wage. This is where Councilmember Wonsley is really highlighting the $1.40 rate. Although the DLI report is clear at the 89 cents on average, key word, on average, you can achieve a minimum wage on average, that's not going to be a guaranteed minimum wage for the majority of those trips because there's so much dynamic change on a per-trip basis. That's why you have a lot of drivers here that are here to support this policy, that's why you have a lot of drivers here against this policy, because depending on what kind of driving you do, you are going to end up with wildly different rates. And so there are people who are doing pretty well as drivers because they are only picking and choosing trips that work for them, and it's maximizing their rates. And then there are other drivers who are doing way more types of trips, way more diversity of trips, less selective in their trips, and they're getting exploited in a different way. And so we're trying to identify a way to capture the most reasonable scenario to establish a minimum wage, and that's the fundamental challenge that we're faced with here. And so I won't be supporting this motion today because our staff is really digging into those dynamics right now. And we're only actually looking at the diversity of expenses that drivers incur, whether they're driving a brand-new, high-end vehicle or, you know, a more economical, older-model vehicle. That's the only variability that our staff are looking into right now. They're not looking into the diversity of trips when it comes to the active rider time and what the impact might be with the variance on that. And again, to Councilmember Palmasano's point, if you have a rider in your car for the totality of the hour, that rate would go down. But we have to take into account that you're not going to have a rider in your car 100% of the time. And so that's what makes this whole conversation complex. That's why our staff are looking into the DLI report. I'm not questioning the accuracy of the DLI report, I'm highlighting the inherent nature that it is a range of diverse scenarios that lead to multiple outcomes. And we are trying to target a policy that eliminates the most egregious outcome where drivers are getting exploited to the maximum. So that's what the purpose of this is. This is why we did a time extension, so we can dig into that complexity, account for it both in our city policy and make sure that our state partners are accounting for it, so that drivers across Minnesota are protected. So those were the only remarks that I wanted to share. I'm checking the queue to see if anybody has left. I see no further discussion, so I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Rainville.
No.
Councilmember Chavez.
No.
No.
Councilmember Vitale.
No.
Councilmember Ellison.
No.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
No.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
No.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
No.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
No.
Vice President Shugtai.
No.
President Payne.
No.
There are three ayes and 10 nays.
That motion fails. And are there any other further amendments? Seeing no other council members in queue, we have now adopted the motion to extend the implementation date to July 1st. No other motions passed. And so that carries, and the ordinance is adopted for the mayor's consideration.